And call the meeting to order. Roll call. Commissioner, Bill is out today and Lori may be here. And today, the assigned county board member would be Mark DeSanto. Anyway, but we do have a quorum. I would note that any items require the majority of the Planning Commission. So it's not a majority of those presidents, majority of the Planning Commission. So it means all four votes would have to be yes on any item for it to pass. Since it's not a majority of those presidents, majority of the Planning Commission. And with that, I guess, Jerry, if you'd so note that. So if President Lori or Mark come in, if you could note that when that occurs. Item one, for the audience, there's agendas in the back bookshelf and there we have Lori. There are items, our agendas in the back bookshelf, if you need one. I'm going to suggest that we move item one after item 18. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval of the June 26 minutes. Everyone have a chance to review it. Any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. Today's agenda, we have consent calendar items four through 13. And then the remainder of the agenda where we've moved item number one after 18. And other than that, are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion for approval of the agenda with moving item one behind 18.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Consent calendar items. Today's consent calendar items are three through 13. PJ will read those for the record. And if you're in the audience and want one of those items pulled after those are read, you have the opportunity to pull it. If not, they'd be on, remain on the consent calendar for approval as action under one item. The following items have been placed on the consent calendar. For action to be taken on all items in accordance with the staff's recommendation by a single vote, any item may be removed from the consent calendar by the Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations of Pennington County Board of Commissioners who make the final decision. Conditional use permits unless they're basically referred to the board are, the final action is here. Unless someone basically requests it to be moved to the board after our action. PJ, if you'd read items three through 13 for the record.
Four through 13.
Four through 13, yeah.
Okay. Item four, conditional use permit review 1514 for Donald Strobe to review a single wide manufactured home as a single-family residence in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends that it continue the extension of conditional use permit 0514 to the July 24, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item five, conditional use permit review 0527 for West River Electric Association to review an electric power substation in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 0527 with 11 conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1513 for Richard and Dolores Lindstrom. Rod Lidstrom is the agent to review a ranch hand residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends that they continue the review of conditional use permit 1513 to the July 24, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Item seven, conditional use permit review 1536 for Donald and Margaret Norton to review an existing shop building with living quarters to be used as a guest house on the subject property in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1536 with six conditions. Item eight, conditional use permit 1607 for Ryan Nelson to review an existing accessory structure or pole barn to remain on the subject property prior to a principal structure in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1607 to October 9, 2017 Planning Commission meeting with three conditions. Item nine, conditional use permit review 1703 for McDaniel Trust. Susan McDaniel is the agent to review a vacation home rental on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1703 with 16 conditions. Item 10, construction permit review 1515 for Flack Trucking Incorporated to review the continuation of stockpiling soil, leveling the plowed fields, and removing soil from the property. The disturbed area is being returned to farm ground. Staff recommends the approval of extension of construction permit 1515 with 11 conditions. Item 11, conditional use permit 1723 for Cliff Dahl to allow for existing structures to remain on the subject property to include the addition of a new pole barn frame building on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1723 with seven conditions. Item 12, conditional use permit 1726. Grant Bolt, Greg Bolt is the agent to allow a recreational resort on the subject property to include a maximum of 11 seasonal cabins, a manager's residence, and a maintenance shop in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends denial without prejudice of conditional use permit 1723, as it says here, but we'll change that, with the applicant's concurrence. Item 13, conditional use permit 1724, Chance and Leslie Larson to allow an internally illuminated sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 1724 with eight conditions.
PJ, as you noted, I assume you're pulling item 12?
Pulling 12, please, yes.
Any further ones being pulled by staff?
No, sir.
Any other items, three through, or four through 13, that are being pulled by the Planning Commission? Anyone in the audience wishing to hear any of those items, four through 13 separately? Otherwise, they'll be end up on consent calendar. Are you none, would entertain a motion for approval of consent items four through 11 and item 13?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent calendar is approved. Item 12.
Item 12 is being pulled by staff just to make a correction in the motion for approval. It's conditional use permit 1726 for Grant Bolt, Greg Bolt is the agent for the recreational resort. We just want to change the condition instead of reading conditional use permit 1723, as it says in the agenda, to staff recommends deny without prejudice of conditional use permit 1726 with the applicant's concurrence.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve conditional use permit CU 17-26 with the changes suggested by the department chair.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Excuse me?
Yeah, I'm on board with Lori here. I think that you just said to approve, but the recommendation is to deny without prejudice.
Oh, yes, okay. Approve the denial.
I'm sorry, I thought she had said approve the changes, but approve the recommendation. That's what I understood.
Approve and approve.
Okay, my mistake then.
Well, is it corrected sufficiently?
Well, just recommend the denial without prejudice for CU 1726.
Yes, with the changes recommended. Okay.
And that's what I would second.
Mr. Chair?
Lori.
Can I ask PJ a question? Again, why, why is the applicant agreeable to denial without prejudice?
Well, I can give you.
I just think we need an explanation.
Yeah, sure. Originally, when the applicants were up talking with staff, I met with them and they had some ideas of what they wanted to do on the subject property. It was recommended to them that they go through a PUD to do what they want. We gave them every option that they could do and they chose to do the conditional use permit on this bottom corner lot. When staff reviewed it, after, like we normally do, go deeper into the lot, it was found that it doesn't match the low-density residential district area. So staff reached out to the applicant, told them what was going on, and he agrees that it can be denied without prejudice. He's okay with that and he'll come back for a planned unit development application.
Any other questions? You have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Are you none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
I'll take us to item 14.
Hi, Amy Rittering, Planner One. Item 14 is a conditional use permit 1725 to allow for one pole barn, three greenhouse structures in a suburban residential district located on the northwest one quarter, northeast one quarter, southwest one quarter, and section 31. Township one north, range seven east. And to allow for one pole barn structure in a suburban residential district located on the east one half, GL3, section 31, township one north, range seven east. And to allow the one pole barn on that, on that subject property to remain after the, after the double wide just removed. Staff will be recommending the approval of conditional use permit 1725 with the corrected nine conditions. There was a typo in there in the report. General description, Lisa Lorzell is the applicant for Donald Wajahowski, or she's the agent, I'm sorry. The conditional use permit requested is to allow for the pole barns and the three greenhouses on the northwest one quarter, northeast one quarter, southwest one quarter, and one pole barn in the east one half, GL3, section 31. Township one north, range seven east, in suburban residential district. On the existing conditions, both subject properties are vacant of all structures currently. On the east one half, GL3, it is 19.73 acres. And the northwest one quarter, northeast one quarter, southwest one quarter, it is 10 acres. Both subject properties are accessed off of a private access easement off of Miracle Road. Both properties will be, have greater access to them through a 19-foot wide by 650-foot wide driveway that will be constructed through a construction permit 1708, which you'll hear next. The analysis, at this time, both subject properties are vacant of single-family residence, which is why we're applying for the conditional use permit 17-25 for the pole barn and the three greenhouses on the one subject property and the one pole barn to remain in the suburban residential district after the double wide is removed. On July 30, staff performed a site visit to verify that there are no structures on the property and that there is an existing approach off of Miracle Road. When staff did an interdepartmental routing, the only area of concern came from Rapid City Public Works, which basically came about the greenhouses, they wanted to make sure that the greenhouses were only going to, that they were not going to be used for commercial purposes. Staff and applicant verified that they were not going to be used for commercial purposes. Also in writing that they are not going to be used for commercial purposes, it's just for personal uses. Considerations for conditional use permit are done under five factors. The, this conditional use permit does meet those five factors as it's not going to affect the enjoyment of other properties surrounding the area. It also flows with the normal and orderly development of the other surrounding properties. There's no problems with access or drainage or other facilities. There's going to be plenty of off-street parking as that roadway is going to improve that to get access to those properties. And with the greenhouses, there will not be any odors or fumes or dust or noise based on the nature of the structures. So staff is recommending the approval of conditional use permit 1725 with the nine
Questions for staff?
Do they have water up there?
Pardon me?
Do they have water up there?
No, I believe they'll have to drill a well.
Yes, there is a proposed well. The agent is in the audience as well.
Do you have questions?
I have a question for, I'll go to staff first and then we'll go to audience. I guess I got, have a question for staff. I guess, are you comfortable that no commercial use? And I guess, how is that being defined? I almost wonder whether it shouldn't be worded stronger in six that if there's any selling of product out of the greenhouses, that it's automatic verification.
I, I have another question. What size greenhouses are these going to be? Couldn't find it anywhere.
So the exact, yes, so there's.
Thirty by eighty.
Thirty by eighty.
Those are commercial size.
Eighty?
Eighty.
Yeah.
I guess that's my concern is that, you know, it's hard to revoke once the buildings are up.
Sure.
And then it's, you know, all of a sudden, you know, just selling their, you know, to our family and friends or whatever like that. I just, I'm concerned that to have three greenhouses, thirty by eighty, just seems unusual.
Mr. Chair?
Lori.
So you're restricting the commercial activities cannot be performed on the property. There could be commercial activities going off the property, correct? So like, he could be making sales of trees or plants or whatever, but it can't occur on the property. It needs to be done at another location. Is that what you guys are saying?
Our understanding is it was going to be for personal use only, that there was going to be no sale of product.
Ever. There or off-site?
That's my understanding from the applicant. The applicant is in the audience, if you'd like to ask. But my conversations were that it was for personal use only.
It just seems unlikely.
Maybe the agent's the best person to answer that question. Other questions for staff before we go to the agent? Is the agent present, maybe he could address our concerns?
Hi, I'm Lisa Lorzell. I'm agent for Donald Wajahowski. And he's planning on putting fruit trees and nut trees in there. And you know how the deer are in the area? It's large, but it's up two, three. He might only put only one. But we were told, whatever you're going to do, make sure that you ask for it in advance so you don't have to keep coming back. So that's why.
Well, I guess my concern, why I would suggest even stronger wording is exactly what Lori is kind of pointing to. It could be, you know, product that's sold elsewhere, but that's really part of the business then if it's sold elsewhere.
But there's no business. It's just for personal use. There's no business.
It's just personal use.
Personal use.
Mr. Chair, I have a small orchard that I'm developing, so I'm going to ask a question then. How many trees does he plan to plant? And does he plant them in the ground? I mean, I'm just.
Yes.
He's going to plant them in the ground. And the whole purpose of this greenhouse is to protect them from the deer.
Yes.
And any other animals that would come through. I'm just thinking that's a large expense to protect trees because I do the same thing and I don't use near the type of structure to do so. Okay? I'm just, I'm just asking the question to understand.
Any questions for Lisa? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name and. No, one at a time, please.
She's my wife. She's, okay. Well, anyway, okay. First of all, this is Mike and Julie Sisson. It's under Julia Smith. We live directly behind this property. And it's going to, I don't know where they're planning on putting this pole barn that's thirty by eighty, which seems to be extremely extreme to us. But the biggest factor is, is the road. The road going into that property is so small and so narrow, if a fire hits, we're toast. That's one of the biggest concerns. The next one is where are they going to get the water? Because our well is a three-party well for us. One of the other neighbors that gave them the easement, he is a dry well. So if they try drilling wells, we're going to have racket, like there's no tomorrow there. And if they try building this road, which is on the side of a hill, it's all solid rock. There's no place to plant anything. There's no flat ground except on this first 20 that was the original site where they were given easement to this property. And that was under, our understanding that that was where this was supposed to have been going. There was not allowed, there was not to be allowed access to this other 30 that they purchased. So I, we, our thoughts were, are they trying to get ag status by having 50 acres? I'm not sure about the specs on it all. But is, if you have 50 acres, you can qualify for ag? Does anybody know that answer?
I think some of that changed in this last legislative session.
Change in, and we are.
There's criteria for it.
Yeah, and we are suburban residential and a thirty by eighty in my backyard, I don't know where they're planning on putting it, but that's the only flat spot on that piece of property. And we would be looking at it 24/7. We've been out, wife's been out there 38 years, neighbor's been out there 42 years. And where the specs are, what it looks like, they show us, we're right, we're that little pie right behind it.
Okay.
Where this, their property is. And I, they own, is that the 30 or is that, what, what part of acreage is that? Because I'm not sure according to that little print. Because we're, we're right, right, that pie right there is Mike Beardsley. We're right to the left of that and the other lady is right there. And there should have been two other people that should have been there to address this, but we got the notice on Tuesday on a holiday week, week, and all of a sudden, boom, here we are. We had no planning, no, no idea that this was going to happen. The original plan, we had a road meeting about a month ago with our road associationist. It's a Duggar, Duggar Well Three-Party Road Association that Mike Beardsley set up. And I'm sure you guys all know who he is. And there was a, there was a, in the agenda of our meeting, they were going to bring in a double wide. And nobody said what part of the property, but we assumed it was the original 20 where they got the easement from this individual in our subdivision. And that's where we thought, okay, they're going to bring in this pole, or double wide. We go, okay, everybody agreed at the road meeting. And that was the end of it. And I didn't realize, and I asked them, why does it take three to five years to build a house? I used to build a couple houses. And that was my other question. So you're going to bring in, bring in a double wide for three to five years? You can't even get a double wide through the road. Because then they'll have to cut down trees. Are they going to gravel a whole road? And we had, when they built that access easement, they tore up our whole front road. It's all washboard now, never been washboard in 35 years. And we maintained that road, all of us together for the last 40 years. We never had a bit of help with accounting or anything. Then we got our own road association. So all that tax money went into all our road association. Now we can actually put gravel on it. And I really don't think three greenhouses or whatever the specs are that these people want is a good suburban residential idea, especially the water. Because our well is 650 feet deep right now. And if you go any deeper in that area, you're, I don't know if you're ever going to get water. And if you start draining all that water out of our homes, one's already dry. Actually, two of them are dry. So if you start drilling a well and hitting dry holes, you're going to have a clatter like there's no tomorrow. And we've got a lot of retired people in that area. And I just really concerned about this, especially the roads. And if a fire comes out, how's, how are we going to get out? That's one of the huge issues that we have.
Questions for Mr. Smith?
Hi, I'm Julia Sisson. Julia Smith is the letter it was sent to. I've lived out on the end of La Vida Road for 36 years. There's beautiful, nice acreages out there with families and, and everybody enjoys their properties and their privacy and their quiet. And I'm very concerned about what's being brought to your attention today, mostly because many, many years, the county has never maintained the road. La Vida Drive has always been a private drive. And then Miracle Road is a very small path-like road that comes off of La Vida. I'm at the end of La Vida. The other two people that we thought might be here today, I think one is out of town and the other one's Michael Beardsley. I don't, I don't know if he received the letter. Do you guys know who received the letters of, you know, of the notice of this?
Amy, if you could address that.
With these letters, with conditional use permits, everyone within 500 feet of the property has sent a letter. These letters were sent out on the 30th of June, certified mail. I'm looking through them right now to see, you were looking for Beardsley, correct?
See on there.
If he is in 500 feet, he should be on here. And he's not within 500 feet.
His land is right next to ours and I think touches on to.
Gary Scott.
Gary Scott?
Correct. That one is.
Gary Scott? He's out, he's in Indiana on vacation. Gary Scott on there?
Yes.
Burke Fenner?
There's also the sign that goes up with conditional use permits as well. And I do have a photo of that.
And Beardsley was not notified?
Beardsley was.
Why don't you just read the names?
Okay, so you've got Cheryl Schmidt. I do apologize if I butcher these names right now. Cheryl Schmidt, Gary and Myra Scott, Judith, Ron Stevitt. Like I said, I do apologize for butchering these names. Paul Pamela Lowe, Carol Long Henry, Franklin and Teresa Fenner, Kurt and Barbara Anderson, Michael, oh, Beardsley and Nicole Spencer. Sorry, I was just reading the last. Julia Smith, Tree Rock Ranch Partnership.
Thank you.
Okay, my major concern is the fact that La Vida Drive has not been maintained. We've all, even when kids were going to school, everybody, when we didn't have anybody to plow the roads, many times I was out on a Massey Ferguson going up and down the hill sideways trying to get the snow out of there. We finally did form this road association, which has been great. My husband, Mike, who appeared earlier, plows one portion of the road and Kurt Fenner plows Miracle Drive. We finally have gotten the road in, in good condition. We're maintaining it. We're getting gravel now. The main concern here is, number one, the road access that was developed for the first 20 was kind of snuck in. We, there was a road being built, nobody knew about it. I think after they started developing the road in the beginning, they then got a permit when my husband questioned someone about it. He drove over and said, what are you doing? All these trucks were coming in, tearing up La Vida Drive. So originally, that kind of got, Mr. Fenner, I think, gave access through his property and made 20 some thousand dollars to give this guy a road. So we found out about that after the fact. Now, all of a sudden, we have a nice family neighborhood and it sounds like somebody's trying to put a pole barn development with greenhouses behind us. And I don't know exactly where they're planning on putting these pole buildings, but my backyard is right on the northwest corner of one of the areas. And I haven't had time because we didn't get the letters till after the holiday. We picked them up and then we kind of had a little time. And we haven't had time to really get representation, so we're representing ourselves. But the main thing also, like my husband mentioned, is years and years ago, a neighbor had mentioned that not too many homes were supposed to be feeding off of La Vida and Miracle because of the fire danger, because we'd have to have proper access to get everybody out of there if we've had fires. Right now is a prime example. We've got such dry weather. So I am, I need, I'm not understanding why somebody gets 20, builds a road, and is all of a sudden going to feed off of La Vida? Or they're going to build a road out of somewhere else to get in there? Because I think it's way too much traffic. It's going to tear the roads up again. And also, like my husband mentioned, there's, I think there's already two people hauling water who've had wells that have went dry. Everybody, I think, enjoys the neighborhood as a suburban residential. Our barbecues, our family, our little kids playing or whatever in the area. I just can't see why someone would buy this and then misrepresent to us something about having a modular come in for three to four years until they build a house. And all of a sudden, within a week after that, we get this letter saying that somebody wants to build three greenhouses and three pole barns. Very concerning, the noise, the dust. Even when they put the road in, it was very noisy and dusty. I think they did finally get the permit to get the road after my husband drove over and asked them what they were doing. The business thing really concerns me. It sounds like it's huge greenhouses. Don't really understand why we need to have a pole barn greenhouse development behind a nice suburban residential area. I don't think they would do that to Red Rocks. I don't think they would do it to the people. I don't think they would do it to the people that just built beautiful homes to the west of us. And believe me, our taxes are, are high enough right now, and we pay taxes according to residential area. So our concern is, why is it, why is this happening? What road do they expect to use? Miracle Drive and, and La Vida are not a big enough road to handle all this extra traffic. So I hope you guys will take that into consideration. It's very concerning, we haven't had time to get legal representation, representation yet, but we will do so. And I appreciate you. You have any questions for me?
Is this property part of the road district or is, will it automatically become part of the road district?
What, the news, the new part? I think the twenty was agreed to by our road association, but nobody.
Twenty is the only thing that we're taking our road tax to. I don't know about the other thirty.
Well, the discussion should come from the podium so we get it on the tape too. So, and not from the audience.
I think.
If you need to step forward, again, you can.
Okay. He, he met the road association, so he can.
On the road, on the road association, excuse me, on the road association, the original agreement that we had just talked about was, the only access was from that twenty. And that, that tax, the property tax of that twenty, the portion of the road tax went into our road association. That's, that's the only thing I know of. And, and they were, I talked to Gary Scott, I think it was Friday, and I asked him, what, what was the deal with this easement and how did it take place? Because I couldn't really trust the guy that gave him the easement. I, I just, there's a fine line between issues with the way I believe people talk and what, what they say. Because when he started all this, I, I go, why did you do this?
My question, are they in the road district or not?
The twenty is.
Twenty is.
The twenty is in our road district. The other thirty, I, no, is not. I don't know where that.
They won't automatically, if that parcel gets developed or what, doesn't become automatically part of the road district?
Nobody knows.
Okay.
That's, that.
Mr. Chair.
Laurie.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
This easement that you're talking about, could you show us on the map? Are you talking about the easement for this driveway over here that goes to the ten?
It's Kirk Fenner's property. Do you have a, it would be.
It's on the ten?
Next to Gary Scott.
Looking to see if there's a map here.
Is it this? Is it this?
Yeah, it's also, it's also in your packet, that.
It's this long driveway that goes to the ten, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. That's a document that was recorded and made.
The point in one right there, that is the middle of the two properties, the point in one, well, Gary Scott is that, or not, Beardsley is the pie one, okay? We're the next one to Beardsley, which is an L shape. And Karen's is the long narrow strip. And then it's Fenner's is the seventeen acres to the right of Miracle.
To the east.
And that's where the easement came into play.
Okay, thank you.
And that was, should have never happened to begin with, but the wool got pulled over our eyes. And he cashed out. And that's why we're so upset about this.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one more question?
Go ahead, Laurie.
Is, is Mr. Fenner's property part of the road district?
Yes.
And so his, a portion of his property taxes goes to the road district?
Correct.
And he granted this easement, which he has a right to grant an easement, correct? Okay. So I, well, I guess I don't understand the issue about how they pulled the wool over your eyes. I mean, anyone can grant an easement across their property, correct?
And they started the road before we were, none of us were aware of it.
Well, the, well, the whole situation was, I didn't know anybody, I'm not familiar with all the codes and everything like that. We have our own private little area, okay? It's a dead-end street. So when somebody opens up a road to a whole bunch of people that say, okay, I want to develop this whole area, which they could possibly do. Without using our own road that we have worked on forever, and I, okay, I get it, progress. But I just don't feel that anybody should benefit off of the road that's already been there for years and years and years and say, okay, I'll give you forty grand, you do whatever you want to do, come through my property, go, go to somebody else's. And everybody else is sitting there going, how does he get away with it? Without anybody saying a word? That's my question.
Well, I would agree with, and I guess maybe that gets more into.
I don't know, like I said.
To legal question, because like, if it's his property, anybody can grant an easement on their own property.
I didn't know, I didn't know that.
And if it's, you know, it depends on how the road easement initially was set up on the verbiage on there.
And if we would have had a road association back then, when he granted these people the easement, that might have came into play.
Well, I guess, Brittany, you have the.
I don't know what.
The next agenda item to talk about the road. I assume that kind of.
The next agenda item is the construction of the driveway on the four properties that he owns, yeah. But since the easement has come up, just one point of clarification, there was an existing easement there on the property. When the applicant or the landowner came in, he owns four properties there that are adjacent. That existing easement only allowed access to two of the four. So staff talked with him and his agent and recommended that they talk to the landowner who has the easement, existing easement on the property, get it reworded to allow access to those four lots, because there wasn't the legal access at the time to all four. So they went ahead and they did that. One of the conditions of, so essentially, just based on that, that's four separate lots, that app, the applicant could build four individual single-family residents if he wanted to. However, in conversation with staff and also talking to the landowner, Mr. Fenner, who had the existing easement on there, one of the conditions in the new recorded easement is that it allow access only to two single-family residents on those four properties. So the applicant's not intending to build any more than two on the four that he owns.
Well, another question I had for staff is, I mean, the issue that's brought up on increasing traffic and fire accident and all that, but I'm assuming that we aren't anywhere close to the twenty or forty unit rule.
No, ma'am, no, sir.
And, Mr. Chair, and just so I understand what PJ just said, so for this, this thirty-acre parcel, originally, there had been a condition that they could have four?
No, there wasn't a condition that they had, could have four. They're four individual parcels.
Okay.
So they, he could, or somebody, anybody could. If you have four different owners, each one could put a house on. One owner, each individual parcel, so it could be up to four.
But now it's two.
The easement only allows access to, and to, single-family residences on those four properties.
So actually, we're decreasing density.
Decreasing by two, correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand that.
Okay, so a question.
Yep.
Where, okay, you're, you've got, you've got the, the first twenty, let's say. This is, this is the confusing part, because we don't know what's going on, and we want to know what's going on. Where is all this going to take place? Because I don't want it in my backyard, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Where, where is the plan for all this?
Well, and I guess I would.
I would talk.
Kind of have two different things on that. I mean, I would like to, have liked to seen the plan too. In fact, I was going to suggest that maybe this should be continued to see a plan in the building.
Right, that would be.
However, you don't have a right to, as long as they're within the setbacks.
Okay, fine.
You, you really can't dictate what your neighbor, where your neighbor is going to build. You, you can, I mean, it can, as long as it meets the suburban residential and permits are gotten, but I mean.
Yeah, what about, what about the greenhouses? Is that suburban?
Well, that's the question in front of us today.
Okay.
There, there is a layout of the proposal actually in your next agenda item. It's a lot smaller. Amy has the original here in her hand. If you have any questions.
I don't see a layout. And it goes over where all of these structures are going to be placed, and they're predominantly in the center of the lots that he owns. And if you go back to the presentation, it is hilly and forest, like they were talking and discussing about. So where he's putting these is, yes, the cleared portion, however, it's going to be completely surrounded with the trees. So they are, they are doing their best to try and hide it.
Well, and I, I guess, I did see that, but I, quite honestly, I can't read the print.
It's tiny.
Yeah, no, that's.
It's really small.
Yeah.
Can you put this up on the screen? Do you have a slide of this?
You have.
No, okay.
I'll go make some pictures. I'll go make copies.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I, I have another comment, and that is you can't maintain plants, even trees, in greenhouses without some kind of staff. You know, I, I suppose the owners could, you know, take care of everything, but that's a full-time job. And they apparently live elsewhere.
Mr. Chair, I've done some quick numbers, just because I've started an orchard, and depending on the type of trees and whatnot, you could have the maximum, if it was a thirty by eighty, like, like we understand, and depending on the type of trees, determines how many feet apart you should plant them. Minimum amount of trees that could be planted, or the maximum amount of trees that could be planted in one of these, depending on what they are, is a hundred and sixty trees in one of the greenhouses. Depending on if the, if the spacing between the trees, I don't know how the greenhouses are going to be, not seeing it, if they're going to take it high at six or eight feet, if you, if they grow dwarves, you can put more of those towards the sides versus into the center and put your taller trees in the center. But they could have a maximum, depending on what trees they're wanting to grow, is a hundred and sixty trees per greenhouse.
Wow.
And then depending on if they are trying to do different other type of trees, I would say they could have anywhere between sixty trees, sixty, less than sixty, but the minimum number if they put it is the, at their expanses, could have sixty trees in a greenhouse, depending on what type of trees or fruit trees are adding.
Mr. Chair, despite the declarations, this just sounds like and smells like commercial. And I can't get that out of my mind.
Staff just talked to the, the agent, and she would be willing to ask for only one greenhouse at this time, instead of the three.
At this time?
Yep, at this time. We applaud her for telling us everything upfront. We appreciate that, because usually it's the reverse, that people come in later and try to get more this time they're coming up.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment? I mean, you know, we're second-guessing someone's, maybe this is someone's hobby. I mean, you know, I like to golf, maybe he likes to grow trees. I mean, come on, it's, it's plants.
Well, and maybe this ties into fifteen more than, you know, one of the concerns that's brought up about fire and access and on here, and then on item fifteen, the site plan that we have now, now that I can read it. You know, one of the things is existing turnaround. Does that meet the fire department regulations? As far as for a turnaround for fire apparatus? In some ways, if that's getting improved as part of this, you know, road improvement, that's proposed as part of fifteen, it actually improves the situation over current situations if there's no turnaround.
And typically, excuse me, sorry, Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor, in these situations, and then for the next request, you could ask for like a T turnaround. That's pretty typical in these kind of requests. Normally, they would require a ninety-foot-wide cul-de-sac or an at least some kind of T where they could back in and come out.
Well, again, I'm tying it to the site plan, since it wasn't included in fourteen, but the proposed septic field and the comment that was made that this is all rock and there's, do we know that a septic field is even doable in this area?
A profile hole has not been done on that site that I'm aware of. Has it been? Oh, yes, I guess it has been, I apologize. And did it pass? Yes.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Or Laurie, do you have another question?
Mr. Chair, and also, I guess, the comment about why anyone would want to put a double wide and spend three or four years building a home. Some people build their own homes. I know people who've lived in basements for a decade as they built their home.
Before you speak again.
Last, last thing I want to say is, what if you can't get water?
Well, people haul water.
Well, wait, you've had your opportunity to speak. Let's see if anyone else in the audience speaks before you come back up, so.
No, I mean, I guess I would just like to make that comment. Someone made the comment about, you know, why does he need to have something sitting there for three or four years when he builds a home? I mean, people do that.
Yep.
So I, I think that's not a valid comment. So, you know, he likes to grow plants and build his house, I mean.
But I do wonder how much water is used by three green, thirty by eighty greenhouses. That's, sounds like a lot of water in a community that is worried about it.
Yeah, water's an issue. Yeah, water's an issue.
Is there anyone else that hasn't had an opportunity to speak yet? And then, Mike, I'll let you come from back over.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question for clarification, if you don't mind. And if the representative could answer this question. Is it Laurie? Is it what?
Lisa.
Lisa. On this map here, this layout plan here, it says the, the measurements for the greenhouses, is it three foot by thirty foot by sixty foot, or is that a typo?
I'm sorry, I just talked with the applicant. The applicant is willing to take off all the greenhouses and just go for the pole barn. It seems the discussion is mainly about the greenhouses, so she's asking to take that off the table.
I, I guess I would comment, we're, we're having debate. Some ways, I think you may be, I don't know, it's up to you, the applicant or the agent, but I mean, I don't know that it's, you know, this is a no at this point.
Right.
That's part of the discussion.
That's kind of the reason why I'm asking the question, because if these greenhouses are three feet tall greenhouses, that changes something. I'm, I'm just assuming, because it could have been a typo on there, I just want to verify. Because people do make low-line greenhouses for their hobbies, that's why I'm trying to ask the question to verify.
Travis, it says three, three times, three thirty by sixty, that's what it is. The pole barn's thirty by eighty, and the greenhouses are three thirty by sixty.
It just ran together, so I thought, I was like, what?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough.
Anyway, but, anyone that hasn't had an opportunity to speak that wishes to speak? Mike, did you want to have some, do you have other comments?
Another main concern, like I mentioned before, is La Vida Drive and the little path Miracle Road set up originally for all of this? Because I, I've been out there thirty-six years and I can't, I, everybody said it was hard to add anything else to this area and get more roads. If somebody's trying to do this, it seems like they need a road coming in from another direction and not, can you imagine all the traffic, just trying to put all this stuff in there and tearing up our roads again? And the water, of course, was the main issue too, because we got people hauling water. So, again, La Vida, La Vida Drive and the little Miracle Road is just not a, a big enough roadway to, I think, have this many people feeding off of it. That's the main concern, I think. Thank you.
Laurie.
Brittany, do we have any knowledge of, of the accessibility to water in this area? No, we don't know anything about that. And we typically don't, we typically don't make that a requirement before we approve something.
No, we don't look at wells.
It's up to the owner, you know, whether or not they want to haul water, or if they can drill a well, or how deep they drill the well, or.
Correct. The only thing that we look at is whatever kind of water system they have for the size of the lot that they have, whether they can have a septic on it. And that minimum is one acre unless they have some community water system. That's the only thing that we verify, but any of the other stuff is done through the state.
And you, and there's a sep, there's a spacing requirement for the water well and the septic system, correct? That's state requirement, DNR?
Yes.
Okay.
And as far as, I have two questions, I guess. I mean, as far as, from our standpoint, it's not a landlocked parcel, it has legal access.
Through that easement.
So, and they were proposing four, and now we're, it's limited to two, so we've actually reduced the number of homes that could be on that, correct?
Correct.
And then I guess the other thing, as far as if there is a water impact to other wells, that's more of a DNR function than it is on well permitting and that than county administered, correct?
Correct.
And Mr. Chair, just so I get this out there clearly, currently, there's four parcels. In all technicality, four wells could be drawn, as long as you talk to DNR, and as
like, they can, four sides, if they hit water, they can draw 18 gallons per minute according, without any kind of permit or anything extra, like, right now, they could do that. And if it reduces the number of, of spots, and that reduces the number of potential wells that could be drilled in the area, correct? Am I understanding that correctly? Because every, every parcel would be, could be a single dwelling home, and every single dwelling home can drill a well.
Correct, through the state, they can ask for that permit, yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, they can get a permit, and they can do it regardless, like, for a single-family home, you know, with the state's approval.
It's my understanding if they're doing a single-family residence and get a well permit on their lot, yes.
The reducing parcels means there could be less individuals trying to drill a well.
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Lori.
Can I ask a question about road districts? This may not, this may be outside your area of expertise, but when you have construction traffic on a road, a road that's in a road district, is it, is it the road district's responsibility then to point out the damage and get it corrected by the person who causes the damage, if there's increased traffic because of construction? Because that seems to be an issue.
Maybe it's more of a Michelle question, so.
Yeah. I mean, that's, you know, that, several people have brought that up, the increased traffic, and I think the increased traffic is going to be associated with the construction.
Michelle Hoffman, State's Attorney's Office. Unfortunately, I don't have a ready answer for you on that particular issue. And, and I also question in my own mind is whether the applicant is willing to join the road district, because that might, I don't know that we can compel a property owner to join the road district, but perhaps if they're willing to, that might alleviate some of the concerns voiced by the neighbors in the road district.
That's the kind of question I had earlier, whether they automatically become part of the road district by using the road.
Because, again, this parcel has access across another person's property with an easement. But in, but to get to that property, they have to go on a road that's maintained by a road district.
Correct. And again, I don't have the answer to those two questions, but the applicant is here. If they're willing to join the road district, then they obviously would contribute toward maintaining that road, and that would make sense, given the use of the road. But I don't have, I apologize, but I don't have a ready answer to those questions without doing a little research.
Lisa Larzell, there are already two parcels that have been being taxed as part of the road district since the inception of the road district.
And that's the 20-acre?
That's the, the 10, and the 10.
The 10 and the 10, okay.
So those are for two family dwellings. So there's already, there'll be one person there, but there's already two parcels being taxed for the road district. If that helps.
And if we're only putting two residences, if the easement restricts it to two, and they're paying for two.
Yeah, so.
And in actuality, it really only will be one.
Yeah.
Because the double wide, the manufactured home is temporary and will be removed, that's why we're asking for the conditional use permit. Because then it'll have a little garage there without a primary structure. Does that help?
Okay.
I, I guess a question for staff. The, the site plan was included with item 15, which we have yet to formally address. And yet, I think part of, some of the concerns, and I think part of the decision for us is, is this site plan tied to item 14 also? I mean, as part of a requirement? Because like, if this is just conceptual, and the greenhouses get moved right to adjacent to a border, you know, with a 25-foot offset, you know, off the property line, you know, maybe, I may view it differently than if it's in the middle of the property as shown in the, the site drawing.
Sure. And at first, it wasn't included at the request of the applicant in the site, in the packet.
So, if we grant a permit.
Mm-hmm.
What's the obligation to adhere to this, the site plan?
Well, they still have to meet the setbacks in a suburban residential district. There's still three lots here. They have 25-foot setbacks on the front, and rear, and eight on the sides. You mean, like, keeping the greenhouses on this lot and the double wide on this lot? Is that what you're asking? Or are you asking for setbacks?
Well, yeah, I guess I'm not clear at this point whether we have the greenhouse or not, but are one, one or none, or, but anyway, but I guess, like I said, if, to me, it influences my decision if the greenhouses are in the middle of the property versus if they're just off the minimum setback. And if this site plan is, is, if there's no requirement to adhere to it.
Mm-hmm.
Then it could go right against the property line, and it'd change my decision.
Sure. And I think that part of it is conducive of the road that's being constructed, and also in the conditions you could make that a condition, that it's done in accordance with the submitted site plan.
It hasn't been submitted, that was.
Right, but I mean, like, the, you know, this site plan, we could call it an exhibit or call it whatever you would like it to be, so it's adhered to. Because of where these are, these greenhouses are pretty far off the lot. And if you do go out there, there's not a whole lot of buildable area out there, there's a lot of ravines and, and things like that, so.
I mean, this is the flattest space for the greenhouses, and it is in that middle section.
Yeah.
Where they are located. And that's why the applicant requested to put them there.
There.
I, I think it's worthwhile to have that as a condition to include the site plan.
Okay.
Other questions, or anyone else from the audience wishing to speak? I guess, Lisa, if you could, if you could come forward, please. I guess I'm not clear on number of greenhouses, or are you proposing no greenhouse at this time, or one, or, you know, there's been kind of discussion, but there's no formal motion, and I guess I'm not sure where you're at, at this point, as far as representing your client.
If you can't grant the three greenhouses, if you can't grant one greenhouse, let's remove them, and at least get him on the property and in the neighborhood.
Well, I think that request should come from you. I mean, do you want us to move forward considering with the three, or one, or none?
What are your feelings with them?
Well, until we have emotion.
I mean, if you're going to deny them, there's not going to be 160 trees in a greenhouse, and yes, it is a very big hobby of his. Our family has fruit trees and nut trees and gardens, and that's kind of what we do. And he does not intend to sell. Using a greenhouse helps the water usage, helps you have fruit. There's an existing easement that's already there before he purchased the properties. For as long as the road district has been in existence, those two parcels have been taxed as part of the road district. And there's never going to be any more than two dwellings, and that'll be for a very short time, until the primary dwelling will be built.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. In the site plan, there's two proposed pole barns, one's 20 by 20, and one's 30 by 80. Is the conditional use permit in item 14 for the 30 by 80, or the 20 by 20?
The 20 by 20 and the 30 by 80. The reason why it's for the 20 by 20 is because the manufactured home will go away, and then there'll be on that 20-acre parcel, a 20 by 20 pole barn with no primary structure.
Okay.
And originally, he considered just making the whole 40 acres one parcel, but that seemed to be not necessary. But it's only him, and he's one person.
Okay.
And one more question for staff, I guess, as far as, this is suburban residential, but can it be taxed as an ag? If it's, that was one of the questions that came up, and I'm not sure it's necessarily pertinent, but I guess I'm more curious.
Our zoning districts are not tied to how property is taxed.
Okay.
It's how it's used. So you could have a suburban residential zoned 80-acre piece of property, and it could be taxed as agriculture, if that's the primary use on the property.
Okay.
As determined by Department of Equalization.
It's not affected by the suburban residential zoning, is it?
Right, they don't, they don't look at that necessarily.
And one of the requirements to get ag exemption is you have to have a certain amount of income off of your ag property now, too. After the last legislative session, I believe, they put a dollar value of one of the criteria to meet the ag exemption. I'll have to double check it, but I'm, I think it's, you've got to make a certain amount, and I think it's pretty low, it's like $2,000, because, but you still have to have ag income, and you have to designate it as ag income from this last legislative session. I don't know when that goes into effect, but there is, there are requirements to be considered ag for tax purposes.
Thanks, Travis. Lori, you have?
No.
Oh, I thought you had a question.
No.
Right now, the staff's recommendation for approval with the nine conditions, we've had some discussion on possible, including the site plan as far as one of the conditions. I had suggested early on possibly the, and it maybe it ties to what Travis just brought up, as far as like, the income off the property, if it's, basically, it's revoked possibly, just a suggestion. We, we don't have a motion in second in front of us.
I'm willing to make a motion. I, I move for approval of conditional use permit. Is it 16-7, or is it a different number? It's 17-25, with the nine proposed conditions, adding a 10th condition, that the property developed, be developed per the proposed site plan.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion?
So, so your motion includes the three greenhouses?
Yes, the site plan.
Okay.
I was leaning that way after clarification, just so you're aware, because I don't see anything that prohibits it. I think, you know, the water issue is going to be a.
Limiting.
A property owner, it's going to be a property owner, just like any other property owner, if, whether he has the greenhouses or not, he's going to have to figure out how he's going to get water, whether he drills a well, whether he trucks it in or whatnot. So to me, I think it meets all the requirements of, of what's put on them, and that's why I'm, I'm looking forward to voting for it.
I guess, Cam, and I, you know, I'm the one that brought up on possibly strengthening as far as, you know, their sales, but I mean, it does say no commercial, it just, it could get into a legal interpretation of that, but I think it does cover that in case it ends up going that way.
And if they applied for ag, they would have to show that they were selling something off the property, that would be documentation to show that they're doing something commercial. So I think that protects, what your concern is, is that if, if they do commercial activity off of this, they would have to report it as income, and then, especially if they're going to try to go and become ag exempt, if that's what your fear is, you're, you're making an assumption about what this individual's doing. We're just trying to say, are they meeting their criteria, and we've put restrictions on it? And if they violate those restrictions, then we, then we move forward from that with the violations. It happens. But at this point, there's no reason to not believe that it's going to do something nefarious.
Mr. Chair, I, I agree. I see no reason to deny it, even though it makes me nervous, just as it makes the neighbors nervous, but that's the way of it.
Any further discussion? Motion, we have a motion second. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried. And since it's a conditional use permit, unless you appeal it to the county board, this is the final action, so if you wish to appeal it, it needs to be appealed to the county Jerry can, can help you, or yeah, or basically have to, can direct you on how to file appeal.
Come visit our office after the meeting, if you need to. Come visit our office after the meeting, if you need to.
Item 15.
The same property, so just get them.
TJ Dref, environmental planner. This is for a construction permit, CP 17-08, to construct a 650-foot-long driveway that will provide access to the subject property and give a, provide a location to install utilities. The applicant plans on, in the drive area, clearing the trees for the approximate 650 feet in length. They will grade and build the drive with ditches and culverts as needed, install utilities, gravel the drive, and seed the ditches once complete. A site visit was performed there on June 30th, 2017, and at the time, the site was vacant of any structures, and work has not commenced. And staff does recommend approval of the construction permit with eight conditions.
Questions for staff? Anyone wishing to address this item, either applicant or from the audience? I mean, none, the staff's recommendation is for approval.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
So this is all going to be access from La Vida Drive?
Existing easement.
This, this one is for work on the property, correct?
But the access comes on the easement across, correct?
Correct. Over this way.
So they're, they're going to be responsible for the damages to the road, or how, how does that work?
That's, I think, a question for the road district to address.
So we have to assess what damage they do to the road, and then?
Make the.
Ask them to repair it.
I would suggest that you document the condition before work starts.
And it's my understanding that these parcels are already paying their portion of the county tax to the road district.
I understand.
That's our understanding.
The, the two.
The two where the road's going to be built.
Correct.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, and I guess, you know, I don't understand, the access is actually off of Miracle Road, right? La Vida Drive is to the west, so they come down Miracle Road, they do the easement across the guy's property, and then the developments on the parcels that are included in the road district.
Miracle Road turns onto La Vida before it intersects with Sharon Lake Road.
Oh, okay, I understand, okay, I get it now, okay. That's the access to Sharon Lake Road.
Right.
Any other questions, anyone else wishing to speak? Staff's recommendation is for approval with eight conditions. They entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item 16.
Item 16 is layout plat 17-15 to create two, lot two and lot three of Lower Spring Creek subdivision. Just got to bring it up here, one second. Applicant is Dustin and Gary Hunsacker, surveying engineer is Mike Hanson. Current subject properties, we're looking at 22.21 acres and currently vacant of any structures. Again, basically, what the applicant is looking to do is subdivide the existing lot that you see there, outlined in red, into lot two and lot three, subdividing it pretty much down the middle to east and west. Existing property, 22.21 acres, current and future land zoning is limited agriculture district. There's a current operating permit that will be on proposed lot three, as it used to have a residence, and there's no special flood hazard on the area. Lot two and lot three, which are proposed, will be approximately 11.179 acres. Again, both zone limited agriculture, that has a 10-acre minimum on each, so it meets that requirement. And there is a, there is approach permits that are pending through the highway department on the, and they will not be approved until the replating is done, so they're contingent on the replating process. And this is just a layout plat, so there's a, quite a bit of ways to go. Just a little bit of history on the proposed lot two and three. They were sub, this, this subject property was subdivided off of a much larger piece, which is now proposed lot one, which is directly across the road from the subject properties. It was subdivided back in 2003 by a board action, and then everything was rezoned from general commercial to limited agriculture district that same year, which is 2003. This was routed through the interapartmental review, the only item of note that came back, well, two items of note, sorry. First was the one from the highway department, that the approach permit, we're on page eight now, oh, page five, that the one from the highway department is pending the subdivision of the property, and also item H from the register of deeds, that the plat heading be changed to address the, the, the current language that the register of deeds is requiring. So in conclusion analysis, the applicant's request would create two lots, each at around 11.8 acres. These would be probably some of the smaller lots in the area. Within one mile of the subject property, there are two lots that are under one acre, and another one about 4.8 acres, and then these 11-acre lots will be, again, some of the smallest in the area, but just want to bring that out as a note. For the purposes of a layout plat, staff finds no issues with the applicant's request, as a layout plat is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision for general scope and conditions, and therefore, staff recommends approval of layout plat 17-15 with 11 conditions.
Questions for staff? Comments from audience? Staff is recommending approval of layout plat seventeen fifteen with eleven conditions.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve layout plat seventeen fifteen with the following eleven conditions.
Second.
Motion in second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item seventeen.
Item seventeen, layout plat seventeen sixteen to create two lots, lot two and three in Betcher subdivision. I think that's how it's pronounced, not sure. Applicant are Tom and Stephanie Hill. Approximate size is about nine point zero-six acres. Pictured on the screen, outlined in red, is a subject property. The green line is what's showing what the look in the subdivide off. The smaller lot would be just about three acres. The larger lot would be just over six acres. Through the staff review, we did notice that there were some unpermitted decks on the property, which is an item, which is something that the applicants will have to address prior to the minor plat process. Other than that, everything on proposed lot two is in compliance with our department. There was a conditional use permit on the property for a single Y back in ninety-four, which was subsequently moved, removed in ninety-seven. Proposed lot three, which would be the, or sorry, proposed, the three acre lot, which the register of deeds is proposing to call lot two, is low density residential, which has a minimum acreage size of three acres. And the proposed subdivision size per the applicant is three acres, so would meet that minimum requirement. It has all the structures that are currently on the larger parent parcel, so those would remain on the three acre lot, and that includes the unpermitted decks at this time. There is also a current onsite wastewater treatment system with a current operating permit as of two thousand and fourteen. The larger lot, the six acres, which is, the register of deeds is calling to propose, would like it to be called lot three, is vacant of any structures, zone low density residential, and it's twice the required size in that zoning district, and is accessed off of Windsor Road and a section line right of way. The other couple items that came back of note, first was from the highway department that the applicant's application didn't meet the standards of our subdivision regulations. In efforts to help applicants, we do accept less than required documents, or say they didn't get a surveyor involved at the layout plat step. And we have done that before to help out applicants, kind of move through the process to see if it's even something they want to do. Moving forward in the minor plat process, they would definitely have to get a surveyor involved in this and get the actual documents and the distances drawn up and stamped. Also, as noted, the register of deeds is suggesting that the proposed lots will now be lot one A and lot B of Betcher subdivision, and that was included as a condition. And for the purposes of a layout plat, staff finds no issues with the applicant's request as a layout plat is an informal preliminary view of the proposed subdivision for general scope and conditions. Staff will be recommending only ten conditions, but as the applicant did not get a surveyor involved, some of these conditions contain multiple items in them, especially for the subdivision regulations. Normally, we would have, believe it or not, more conditions if a surveyor gets involved, but some of these conditions actually contain multiple steps in them. So therefore, staff recommends approval of layout plat seventeen sixteen with ten conditions.
Questions for staff?
I'm just curious about something. This little square up in the right-hand corner, it looks like the lot line cuts through buildings already there. Can you just explain that?
Sure. These lot lines are from Rapid Map, which through the GIS system, and we say that the lot lines are for entertainment purposes only.
Oh.
And there's actually a disclaimer on the maps that you print out that they're not survey quality, which is when a surveyor does get involved, those dimensions and the distances, not necessarily for that smaller lot, but if, that little square that you're talking about, if that structure does encroach over the line, surveyors should catch it. Yep.
And I note that the more relief you have on a parcel, the more likely the lot line's going to look off too, so.
They can be off as much as a hundred and feet in some cases.
Oh.
And other ones, they're dead on. It's just layers on layers on layers, and depending on the angle of the, that the photo is taken from the air.
Any comments from the audience? Staff's recommendations for approval of layout plat seventeen sixteen with ten conditions? Any motion?
I'll make a motion for approval of layout plat PL seventeen sixteen with ten conditions.
Second.
Motion in second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item eighteen.
Item eighteen is major planning development amendment seventeen oh four to amend the existing planned unit development. The applicant is Kelly Development. Ryan Kelly is the agent. I don't see Ryan Kelly in the audience. Did speak with him yesterday on the phone. He does know about it. I met his agent a couple times. His agent's not here. So that was the issue why I got continued last time, because the applicant wasn't here. So I can go through this, just what does the commission's wish?
I've got some questions, so it might be wise to continue.
Where are we as far as, I mean, at some point, when it gets continued and not at staff's or planning commission's recommendation, because to me, it's maybe our recommendation because he's not presenting or sending an agent.
So there is the ordinance that you're allowed one grace continuation. If an additional continuation is caused because of something an applicant did, then a hundred dollar continuation fine or fee can be applied. We do put that as a condition, five eleven X, on a few of the conditional use permits. It usually doesn't come up with plats or PUDs.
So if we continue it because he's not here, how does that work?
For the ordinance, if it is because of something the applicant did that caused the continuation.
Okay.
It would be a fine. He does know about it. I talked to him yesterday on the phone.
Do you know why he's chosen not to attend?
No, ma'am, I don't.
Well, I'll make a motion to continue PU seventeen dash oh four. And I'd like to stipulate for the last time, one more time. Am I allowed to do that?
I can get you the exact.
And just to continue while you're looking that up, and that would include a fine for the applicant, the continuation.
I was just waiting because that was a motion.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion in second. Further discussion?
I can read five eleven X for you if you'd like. Continuations. Any submittal being considered by the planning commission or county board which requires more than one continuation because of the applicant's failure to meet conditions of approval shall be required to pay a hundred dollar per continuation. The board of commissioners may waive a hundred dollar continuation fee. Unless it was a condition of approval, I suppose now.
Am I allowed to have as part of that motion that this will be the last continuation? Or is that inappropriate?
You could amend the motion if it's okay with the second or.
Well, I included that first time around, but the question was, is it allowed?
Just for discussion, we normally don't restrict the number of times things can be continued. I mean, I'm thinking of the developer on the south end of seventy-nine, who got continued many times.
And then I will withdraw that part of the.
I don't think we normally include that.
Well, but that was because of staff's requesting additional information, not because the applicant wasn't.
And I guess I would argue, you know, your language in there about it being continued because of some action by the applicant, there was nothing, I mean, the applicant's not here.
Yeah, so normally what will happen at this stage is we would, if it got continued, we would include a new condition the next time it's heard.
Yes.
That would then make this into an effect.
Yeah.
We normally don't start off with this.
No.
Yeah.
It's usually, we've given you every opportunity.
Well, I have a question, I guess it's from staff's point. I mean, if we just accept it the way staff does right now, which I think, you know, one of the big contentions was no private wells drilled on individual lots, and that's something that staff is including that. I guess what does staff see as the downside of just acting on it right now? We didn't need a substitute motion if we're going to do that, but I mean.
That at this stage, it's, the planning commission for this item is a recommending body. It still has two hearings before the board.
And a major part of the concern to date has been how he's going to address both the quality and quantity of the water.
Correct. And that's still a condition in the minor plat prior to even recreating lots three through six. When I did speak with him last night, I mentioned that little memo that you have. He also did receive a copy of this memo in the email. Well, it was sent to him. I don't know if he opened it or not, but it does include that condition number twenty about the private wells and the concern, because there was discussion during the last planning commission meeting about that, but no clear direction was given of what we wanted to do. So we were hoping to have the applicant here to discuss that.
Well, I think that's part of why there wasn't more discussion. I think there would have been had he been here, and that's why we're giving him the opportunity to continue it to this meeting.
Because I had questions for him last week. That's why I've motioned to continue it to this meeting.
Correct. And the other two items, condition thirteen and nineteen, the applicant is in concurrence with those, those proposed changes.
I think some people just would like to have direct contact with the applicant, some of the commissioners.
And Mr. Chair, just so I understand, because I wasn't here for the June twenty-sixth meeting, Mr. Kelly was in attendance or was not?
Was not.
And that's why it got continued?
Right.
Okay.
His agent was told that it was going to be at the meeting. We don't know if that ever got relayed to him, but he did also receive a copy of the staff report in the mail prior to the meeting.
So you were expecting him at the twenty-sixth meeting, but he or his agent did not attend?
Correct.
And you did not, did you get any indication of whether or not he would attend today's meeting?
Talked to him last night. He said he'd be here.
Okay. But again, he has his own company and things come up.
Mr. Chair, I guess for the purpose of the board here, I did get a call from Elaine Karski with the Sheridan Lake Highlands Homewares Association. She had three concerns that she discussed with me on Saturday. I recommended that she put those concerns in an email, and I received that email last night at eight fifty-five PM. So I guess I'll hand these out to you guys to make sure that, I guess, her concerns are being carried forward. But again, I asked her to put her thoughts in an email to the board.
And are these in addition to the concerns in her previous letter?
It is, they, these are regarding item thirteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Okay.
So it sounds like we need a continuation. Thank you.
And I was copied on that email. Heard I have been trying to get ahold of each other for a few days. And I did respond this morning to two emails to her on this. And their representation, their representative, their lawyer also did receive a copy of the memo that you have.
As I understand her email, you know, it was regarding the revisions to item number thirteen regarding the lots being added to the HOA. You know, when they got platted, they would be part of the HOA. Nineteen was regarding the building. And then twenty was regarding the well that's been a subject of several discussions.
In your discussion, she was not able to attend today?
Correct.
May I add more credence to the continuance?
But it says Nate Woods. Is he here? The last sentence is that Nate Woods will be attending? Okay.
And PJ, just a question, if you don't mind. Correct me, I've got two questions. The first one is PU seventeen oh four is affecting PU D zero six zero nine. Is that correct in some way, shape, or form?
Correct. It's taking tract B out of oh six oh nine.
And when was the last time oh six oh nine was reviewed?
It was never reviewed. There was no condition for review. It's been, it's existed since two thousand and six. So this is oh six oh nine, right now, all of it, pretty much. And this portion in green is being taken out of it, which is current existing tract B, which is seventeen, what is this? Oh four.
So oh six oh nine is?
John Madden up here.
Just those two now? Or would be those two?
It would just be those two. That's correct.
And it's been in effect for how long?
Since two thousand and six, eleven years. The conditions are in your staff report. I can find them for you.
Page seven. Oh, no, wrong. That's wrong.
I would comment that, give me a little latitude here, but really with motion in second to continue, the discussion should be on continuance.
Fair enough, sorry. I was just trying to get a big picture of what we're looking at.
It's page two.
Thoughts on page two?
Okay. And tying it to, I guess, the motion on table, Mr. Woods, if you could step forward, are you in support or objecting to continuing this?
I guess it doesn't matter to me. It'd be nice to have some of the questions answered for the board, but I just kind of expected today if he didn't show last, so that's kind of why I was here.
Thank you.
Could you restate the motion?
I hope so. I make a motion to continue PU seventeen oh four to the July.
July twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth meeting.
Okay.
You have a motion in second on the table? Any further discussion?
You would think that, you know, people would attend knowing that these issues are there. They, well, there's two sides to this. One, you know, we're basically pushing this down the road, assuming that he will show up at the next meeting. But at the same time, if something happens and this direction goes a different way than applicant or people that have concerns and they weren't here to voice their opinions, then where do we sit? You know what I mean? And so I, there's two sides to this for sure. At this point, I would not be in favor of fining, rather than, I would, I think we should give him a call and try to get him at the next meeting if at all possible, but I am supporting, I will be in support of the continuation motion.
Further discussion? Hearing none for a motion for continued to July twenty-fourth meeting? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I guess that takes us to item one.
Takes us all the way back to item one. So this is the last meeting for a couple of you, huh?
Yeah.
And then for everybody else, so you know, the new interviews for the planning commission applicants is tomorrow during the board of commissioners meeting. They're fairly early in the agenda. They're not item number one, but they're second item right after the consent agenda. But Sig and Barbara, if you can come down here, we have some going away present for you.
Oh, well, thank you.
Well, I would like to say it's been a nice ride. I've learned a lot and met a lot of nice people. And I think that the staff members, the commission members that remain are just absolutely splendid, and we're lucky to have them.
Both Barbara and Sig have been on since two thousand and eleven, and I think Sig was even on earlier than that, wouldn't you, a little gap there?
Ninety-nine, two thousand.
Ninety-nine. So they've been around, they've been around through a lot of contentious items. They've been around through vacation home rental ordinance, and also, most importantly, we're here when the comprehensive plan.
I sat down on the subject committee.
The subject committee, that was a long time ago. But you guys have seen a lot of heavy topics, a lot of heavy items. And but you were, most importantly, you were here during the creation of what's going to change the direction of the county and what's going to hopefully be easier for the staff and for the citizens as we move forward with planning and zoning because of all the work that you did, kind of setting up where we are with the comprehensive plan and then going to the board level and helping out with the discussions there. You know, it took years and years to get it to that point, but finally, the board granted the money, so we got it started, as you know. But.
Well, it's been a pleasure and a relief now to.
I've enjoyed my time too at staff.
I've enjoyed my time too and staff, I think you got excellent staff that you're continuing to build, and I am kind of sad that I'm not gonna be more directly involved with the comp plan, although I, as a private citizen and no longer on the commission, I probably plan to attend a lot of the meetings still, so. Like to, I hope that goes well to its completion, so.
Like to see it too. But we have some going away presents for you guys.
I always wonder where you're gonna grab on.
And then one drop.
So Sig, this is for you for your time here from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and seventeen, as a thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And stick around afterwards, because we want photos and with the planning commission that's here as well. And then Barbara, this one's for you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. One thing in minutes that was wrong.
I better fix that.
You should have given them a bag, so they don't drop it.
Oh, and that's another.
You should get a box.
Got more.
Get a box, alright.
None of this would happen without our stalwart secretary here.
Absolutely true, thank you.
PJ, do you know how many candidates there, that applied, that are being considered for board members?
I think last I saw was ten.
Wow.
Eleven, I'm seeing, I'm getting a signal over there for, for two positions. What's that?
That's gotta be one of the bigger pools.
I would think so, I'm not, I haven't been around for too many, but that is a lot. I know there were some that even had applied and dropped out.
And the meeting's tomorrow at nine, you said?
Starts at nine, and they go through the same preliminary stuff you do, the consent agenda, and then there's one item on there from the city of Keystone that involves our office and septic, and then after that is, are the interviews. So, and stick around until two o'clock, and then we'll go over all of our stuff, all over again.
I have to go to work, thank goodness.
Continue on, I guess, item nineteen.
Item nineteen, county board report, the Board of Commissioners were here, the June twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, planning commission recommendations at their Tuesday, July eleventh Board of Commissioner meeting, which is tomorrow.
Items from the public, we saw a couple of public members here, anyone wishing to speak? Move on to item twenty-one, items from staff, building permit?
Yep, building permit report for June two thousand and seventeen, as you can tell, we're up thirty-seven percent overall from building permits last year, we're at three hundred and eighty-two. As of June, I can tell you we're well over four hundred now, there's only two hundred and seventy-eight as of the end of June last year. Single-family residences are up twenty percent, and mobile homes are down eleven percent. It seems like most people are putting their money in sheds, barns, accessory structures, garages, porches, covered patios, decks, and finished basements, as those are, those are all way up, especially sheds and barns and accessories, up over one hundred percent. We're at twenty-four as of June last year, and seventy-eight as of June this past year. And overall, like I said, we're up thirty-seven percent for the number of building permits, and three percent in valuation, so far this year, we're at fourteen million, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-one.
And I, this report is so much better than what you started with, this is really.
We, we, yes, we agree. We, it was twice as much work for staff, and so we challenged Amy to come up with something new, and she took it and made it very simple. So we're, anytime that we can get you the same information and decrease the workload, we're happy to do it.
Any questions on the building report? Item twenty-two, items from membership, you don't have anything for the cause?
I will be gone on July twenty-fourth. I, I won't have Skype access, I won't have anything like that.
It's not a hundred percent, I could be also out on the twenty-fourth, I won't know probably until, or next week. That'll determine, an answer that comes next week will determine whether I'll be here on the twenty-fourth or not.
So it'll be Lori and the two new guys.
And commissioner DeSanto.
And commissioner, yeah. The continuance.
Well, Bill.
Bill, yeah.
Bill.
I mean, it's more probable that I'll be here, there's a very slim chance that I won't be here, but it's possible.
If we have four and a commissioner, we have enough for a quorum, correct?
As long as you have four, period, you're.
As long as you have four, period, okay, right.
You all got to agree, though.
Do what?
You all have to agree.
What are the chances of that?
Other items from membership? Again, I'd like to say just thank you for everyone, and just the staff in particular for all the support and, and the information you give us, and, and just, it's been great working with everyone here. Sounds like you got a great pool of candidates, you've got ten to choose from, so it's, hopefully, it's pretty productive going forward. I imagine it will be, especially with the comp plan, so.
Well, thank you guys for your dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What are you gonna do now?
The entertaining motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we're adjourned.